Hey, welcome and good evening. I now call the November seventeenth Board Meeting of the Lane Community College Board of Education to Order. In order to continue conducting meetings in a manner that will help to combat the spread of COVID-19 and promote the safety and well-being of our community, this meeting is being held remotely. If I could remind people to mute themselves, that would be great. Thank you. I'd like to remind board members and staff to keep themselves muted and to use the raised hand feature when you'd like to speak. Board members are also asked to have their video turned on so you're visible to the viewing public. Tonight, we will have two board members who are excused from attendance for personal reasons, Steve Mattel and Rosie Pryor. Donna, could you go ahead and take the roll call, please?
Chair Holly Johnson.
Present.
Angela Van Kraus.
Present.
Mike Eister.
Here.
Austin Fullnagy.
Here.
Lisa Fragala.
Present. Okay, so let's go ahead and I would like to welcome Fatima Aben Habib, who is an international program student here at LCC and tonight she will read the acknowledgement of homeland or the land recognition for us. Welcome, Fatima.
Welcome all and thank you for being here with us. Today, we begin our meeting with the acknowledgement that the land we are on is the traditional homeland of the Kalapuaia people. The Kalapuaia were stewards of this very land for over fourteen thousand years before their traditional way of life was forever disrupted and destroyed. We start our meeting with the humility and reverence for the original inhabitants, the Kalapuaia. Now, upon my reflection on this topic, I wanted to state or talk about the case of Morocco and the relationship we had or it has with the native people of North Africa. Morocco had remained under the Roman rule until the fifth century AD. The Arabs then arrived at the end of the seventh century after sweeping across North Africa and the Middle East in the name of their new revolutionary ideology Islam. But the Amazigh were Morocco's original inhabitants. Their history can be traced back as far as three thousand years B.C. That means that they lived in North Africa long before the Arabs came. The Amazighs have multiple central components to their culture. Of course, there is the language, which is called Tamazigh, and the religion. They had an animist culture, although many now are Muslim. In addition to that, the land is another very important and central part to their culture. Amazighs believe that the land will sustain life and that it has protected theirs from multiple invasions. Unfortunately, the Arab countries have not recognized the Amazighs and some have been banned or have even banned parts of the Amazigh cultures, such as their flags and traditional clothing. Instead, the Amazigh people are expected to give up their culture and fully adopt the Arab culture. However, of all the Arab countries that the Amazighs lived in, Morocco is the only one to have officially recognized the Amazigh as a group. In 2011, King Mohamed VI of Morocco changed on the constitution to add the Tamazigh language to the list of Morocco's official languages. A huge step for the Amazigh with it, they have also made an effort to preserve their language by creating a written alphabet to it. Because before it was just a spoken language. The Amazighs still have a long way to go until they are accepted and recognized in many Arab countries, yet no country could deny the significant and historical importance of the Amazigh in their world. And I would like to end my short speech today by expressing my genuine respect and support for all native peoples around the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fatima, and thank you for that reflection. So I will go ahead and adopt the agenda with flexibility without objection. I'd like to adopt the agenda with flexibility. Is there any objection? Okay, without any objection, we have adopted the agenda with flexibility and going to move to the president's report from Dr. Hamilton.
Thank you, Chair Fragala. Welcome everyone to the November Board of Education meeting. November is Native American Heritage Month and I encourage you to visit some of the resources we have on our Native American culture at our CCPD website and also listed in my board report. You can also learn more by looking on the Native American Students Association. You can click the link on my report. November eleventh was Veterans Day. The college closed in honor of our veterans and we held a ceremony the day before in Building One to honor our student veterans and our employee veterans. Special thanks to Alan Azell, Coordinator of the Maxwell Student Veterans Center for conducting this ceremony and on behalf of everybody at Lane, I wish to thank our students and our employee veterans for their service. We continue to work with our creditors. New Q to follow up on our site visit. Richard and I have been invited to attend the commission meeting in Seattle in January where our reaccreditation will be discussed and voted upon. He'll be providing you an update later this evening. Also, you'll be hearing about an update on COVID, our compliance program. It feels good to be finally moving to the other side of the curve here at Lane with over ninety percent of our employees and our students fully vaccinated. Our fall vaccination numbers are definitely high, but we're continuing to work with students who are still having difficulty completing our process. By now, most of you've heard about the OSHA Emergency Temporary Standard, or ETS, that requires employers with over a hundred employees to require full vaccination or do testing with masks. So once again, LCC has been a leader in these efforts and will continue to keep fine tuning our processes. Congratulations to our foundation who raised over three hundred and sixty thousand dollars at our annual fundraiser last week. Our donors were more than generous this year and they could not say enough about our students and about the college. Special thanks to our board members who took the time to come and join us along with faculty and employees who attended, volunteered, and donated. We're kicking off our United Way campaign this week, so I'd like to thank the EA and the EF for their leadership in joining me, assigning a letter of support to kick this campaign off. United Way agencies, they came through and helped our employees and our students during the fires and throughout the year. We really appreciate the work they're doing with food insecurity, housing and childcare, and then so many of the wraparound services. That concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton. So I am going to move us on to public comments. Board Policy BP 320 states that the board will not respond directly to issues raised by the audience, but will refer those issues to the president for appropriate action. However, we do appreciate participation and hearing from the community and LCC stakeholders tonight and as well as through the emails that we receive. So to participate in public comment, you can register at the LCC Board of Education Meeting and Work Session News Article at the bottom of Lane's homepage. Just before your time to speak, you will be made a Zoom panelist, which there is a slight delay as you get moved over from being an attendee to a panelist. Wait for your name to be called during public comment period, then unmute your mic and camera to speak. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker and you are invited to turn your camera on, but it is not required. So let's go ahead and take a look. The first speaker that I have tonight is Diane Peterson, followed by Nancy Vrymoot. Welcome, Diane.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Diane Peterson. I've been a resident of Springfield for two years and lived in Eugene for eight years before that. I'm an active member of the community and I'm raising my children here. One of them just started kindergarten in a public school. I'm also a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. I'm aware of the LCC Board's proposed policy to prohibit guns on LCC campus grounds and buildings and I'm here tonight to voice my support of this policy. As a Moms Demand Action volunteer, I advocated on behalf of Oregon Senate Bill 554, which went into effect on September twenty-fifth and upon which your policy is based. This bill allows K through twelve schools, colleges, and universities to prohibit firearms on campus, including by persons with concealed handgun licenses. LCC's current policy prohibits firearms on campus except for concealed handguns as allowed by state law and for approved instructional demonstrations. With the passage of SB 554, now is the time to revisit and rewrite this policy. Research shows that the presence of guns in schools does not make anyone safer, but instead puts teachers, students, and staff at greater risk. Anywhere a gun is present, there is a risk of gun violence. And the campus community has a right to freedom from fear of gun violence. We've experienced the tragedy of gun violence in Oregon schools and colleges time and again, from Thurston High School to unquote "community college" and more in between. There was an incident just a few years ago at Cascade Middle School in Eugene where Charlie Landeras, a concealed carry permit holder, brought a loaded nine millimeter into the school and was ultimately shot and killed by police. I can only wonder if SB 554 and a subsequent school board policy had been in place at that time, if Landeras would not have brought a gun onto school grounds and would be alive today. I personally know what it's like to live with the threat of gun violence on a college campus. For eight years, I worked at the University of Oregon in the Office of International Affairs, a high-traffic, high-stress environment in a prominent location on campus. I've been through an active shooter training and I've prepared for scenarios in which I would have to run, hide, or fight for my life. While it's better to be prepared than not, these trainings are traumatic and this reactive approach to gun violence says nothing to address the problem of guns in schools. The Oregon State Legislature took a proactive approach to preventing gun violence with the passage of SB 554. It's now up to school, college, and university boards to follow suit. Gun violence prevention policies are essential for preventing gun violence in schools. The LCC Board not only has the ability, but the responsibility to set a policy that will keep the campus community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. So next up, I have Nancy Vrymoot, followed by Martha Moultrie. Can we move Nancy over to the meeting? Great. Welcome, Nancy. Unmute yourself and turn your video on if you choose. We can't hear you yet. There you go. We can hear you.
Okay, and I'm working on the video. Here it is. Oops. Don't hit the buttons too many times. Okay, thank you for welcoming me. My name is Nancy Vrymoot and my pronouns are she, her, and hers. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Cater and volunteer Moms Demand Action for Guns since America. With my husband Daniel, I raised three children in Eugene. I taught mathematics and robotics at Kennedy Middle School for twenty-seven years. Senate Bill 554 allows Lane to prohibit firearms brought in by those with a license to carry a concealed handgun. I implore you to set such a policy. Research shows that the most likely result of allowing guns on campus is an increase in homicides, suicides, and unintentional injuries. I reject the good guy with a gun theory that the concealed handgun will be the solution if violence happens. Statistically speaking, the chance that the right person with the right aim will be at the spot needed to take out a shooter is extraordinarily slim if our greater likelihood is harm inflicted on one of the precious members of Lane's community by one who is allowed to bring the weapon into the classroom. I stand by the numbers on that. Active shooter drills were common when I taught in 4J. We planned for every contingency of a shooting incident. We dealt with details such as reporting the kid safe, how we would identify who was who, when emergency personnel were arriving, how we would know what to do next. We did not plan for staff or other individuals using firearms. We agreed that there would be a far greater chance of injury to students or staff with additional shots fired. In nineteen ninety-eight, I was a victim of a terrifying home invasion. The man who entered my house wrestled me to the ground. I used the one weapon at my disposal, my teeth. After I bit his arm, this man jumped off and ran away. I remain thankful to this day that no weapon was involved. More than one person has told me that had I been equipped with a gun, I could have defended myself. Not true. This man was strong. I stood no chance of using that weapon. He would have had it in his hands in a heartbeat. Please join me and every Moms Demand Action volunteer throughout the country. Let's make this world just as safe as it can be. Reject the carrying of concealed handguns on the campus of Lane Community College. Fulfill your promise to students and families. This policy is within your reach. The time is now. Thank you.
Nancy. So up next, we have Martha Moultrie, followed by Jerry Minahan. Welcome, Martha.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. And you're invited to turn your video on if you choose to.
Okay, there, I've just found it. Okay, hello. My name is Martha Moultrie. I'm a retired educator. Spent thirty-eight years as a classroom teacher and elementary principal on three continents, including the United States, most recently here in 4J School District. I'm very privileged that during the time that I was in education, guns were not an issue. And by the way, I am speaking in support of SB 554. Right now, there is a trial going on, and two trials going on in the United States regarding a number of citizens who have taken it upon themselves to play police and bring guns to supposedly defend people. I have no desire to be defended by people who are untrained and who can come onto a campus or any public facility and supposedly protect me and other people. My son attended LCC. He got an incredible education there. He's now forty-five and at the time that he was there, this was not an issue. I would have been terrified as a parent to have thought that my son was going to go onto a campus where he could be shot by someone who supposedly was there to assist him or to protect him. As the previous speaker just said, the idea of a good guy with a gun is better than the bad guy with a gun or is supposed to counteract that. Doesn't work. You've got people who are untrained, unskilled, and too often unhinged who could carry a gun onto a campus that is supposed to be there for learning and harm innocent people. We don't need that in any part of this country. We don't need a LCC and I strongly urge you to keep guns off of the campus. Thank you.
Martha. So up next, we have Jerry Minahan, followed by Peggy Oberstaller. Welcome, Jerry.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. Thank you for your service and efforts, especially over the past twenty months. I'm Jerry Minahan and I have been a faculty co-op coordinator here at LCC for the past ten years. I know some of you are familiar with our program, but I also know that some of you are new. Especially for our newer board members, I'd like to take a moment today to tell you a bit about our program and how it has and continues to contribute to the college's mission of transforming lives through learning. Cooperative Education, CoopEd or just Coop, as many call it, is a supervised work-based learning program for academic credit. Some use the word internship to make it easier to digest, but it's a bit more complex than that. CoopEd takes the form of courses that are embedded into almost all of our career technical degrees as degree requirements and available to transfer students as an elective. Those courses are taught and coordinated by faculty coordinators like me, whose sole job it is to prepare and see students through a successful work-based learning experience, collaborate with local employers and co-op supervisors, and represent CoopEd at the college and in the community. Students in career technical degree programs at Lane are required to complete a work-based learning course and historically, the majority of those lead directly to jobs. Many interns turn into successful professionals in our community who come back to Lane to hire interns and serve on Lane's advisory committees for career technical programs. Coop does great things for students, for the community, and for the institution. And Lane has done a wonderful job of supporting Coop over the years. Over the coming months, I hope to return periodically to share with you some additional information about our program. I encourage you to reach out to me or any of my faculty co-op coordinator colleagues to learn more about our program. And I'll conclude with a few quotes from some of my co-op students from this past summer term who are still amid the pandemic out in our communities doing great work and rich learning. I learned a lot and feel that I have grown exponentially since starting. I also believe that I am much better prepared not only to go into the computer networking and cybersecurity industries, but I know what my strengths and weaknesses are and what I should study outside of school. I hope other co-op students have a chance to work here. I have learned more than I have ever thought possible from my coworkers. Each of my colleagues are wonderful and helpful people. I consider myself quite lucky to be interning for Essex. I'm learning far more than I thought I would. I'm gaining experience in so many areas of technology from configuring cell phones for users, setting up security systems for project sites, to managing a whole network via the cloud, which will make me more desirable to future employers. I actually have a notepad of about thirty of these, but no time to give them all, so I'll end there and wish you all a happy holiday season ahead.
Thank you. So up next, we have Peggy Oberstaller, followed by Lori Tapahanso, who I believe is in the attendees' room as Building Thirty-One, Room One-O-One. So we'll want to move her over from that name when it's her turn. Welcome, Peggy.
Hi. To the Board of Education and President Hamilton, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Peggy Oberstaller and I have been employed as part-time faculty in health and PE at Lane for more than twenty years with minimum support from the college administration. I am required to have the same education as contracted faculty, but I earn from a different, lower pay scale. I only have job security for the current term and if I'm not assigned enough classes, I lose my healthcare benefits as well as my income. These are very stressful and demanding conditions to work under. Given that, I was very disappointed and angry to learn that LCC's administration are not moving forward to negotiate with faculty regarding SB 551, legislation that requires part-time faculty in Oregon to have access to health insurance as a benefit of their employment. If the administration does not enter into an agreement with faculty, the college and faculty stand to lose access to between five hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand dollars from this newly created state funding account. I can't understand why the administration would ignore repeated requests for negotiation and decline to participate in mediation on this issue. This is not a one-time allocation of funds. It will provide ongoing funding each year. There are a number of ways this funding can be used to support LCC faculty. Here are a few. Ensure that part-time faculty at Lane do not lose health insurance for lack of available class assignments, only to become eligible again after a few months. Allow part-time faculty with family members to have access to affordable healthcare for their families. Restore longstanding faculty furlough days that were made permanent. Compensate part-time faculty for professional development opportunities and involvement in college committees and meetings. Provide curriculum development funding for diversity, equity, and inclusion issues in course curriculum. I urge the college to act immediately by collaborating with the Faculty Association to take advantage of this large amount of funding. With rising expenses, reduced enrollment, and predictions of upcoming budget cuts as a result of the pandemic, it seems unfathomable that LCC would pass up this opportunity for additional funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. So up next, we have Lori Tapahanso, followed by Winona Burke. And we want to move over Building Thirty-One, Room One-O-One, because I believe they are all there together. Welcome.
And then I don't see the video.
There you go.
Hello, I'm part of the trio of speakers and my name's Winona Burks. I'll be going first, followed by Lori. My name is Winona Burks. I work for Health Professions. I'm here representing the Committee on Racial Equity and Social Justice. I'm part of the team today presenting a statement on recommendations for BIPOC faculty recruitment and retention. Following me will be Lori Tapahanso, faculty in the Multicultural Center in the Longhouse Stewart, and then Rosa Lopez, faculty from the Queer Pathways. The Committee on Racial Equity and Social Justice has been working to envision a future for a more just campus, including concrete strategies for increasing recruitment and retention of BIPOC faculty. The committee presents these strategies as a matter of public concern with recommendations to raise awareness, challenges to recruitment and retention, give voice to faculty concerns, and present concrete ideas for a future that is more inclusive and equitable for the benefit of the students, Lake Community College, and the entire community. The LCC EA Committee on Racial Equity and Social Justice calls for the implementation of the following action items in order to increase recruitment and retention of faculty from diverse backgrounds, including Black, Indigenous, and people of color BIPOC faculty. Number one, recruitment. Expand the men-protected classes in Board Policy 505 affirmative action to include first languages, socioeconomic status, and LGBTQI status. Expand definition of diverse workforce to include LGBTQI and non-binary identities. Number two, establish diversity recruitment plan to include targeted recruitment at college and universities that have a relatively high percentage of minority graduate students. With progress towards recruitment and retention goals reviewed on an ongoing basis, no less than annually. Number three, expand scope of the College Affirmative Action Plan. Add Board Education Annual Review and Approval Plan, Plan Metrics, and the Assessment of Progress. Ensure that the annual AA plan consists of three overarching components, an annual focus which is measurable, rigorous, progressive, aggressive, and timely, a three-year focus which is more strategic with specific goals to achieve, and a five-year plan with projected outcomes. Ensure significant effort and dedicated resources are used to quantifiably and statistically increase the AA-protected classes, which are underrepresented at the college. Number four, post all contracted faculty positions according to the standard academic hiring cycle and within a reasonable timeframe in advance of fall term. Number five, add a requirement to post at least five publications and/or services that actively promote or recruit diverse and/or services that actively promote or recruit diverse applicant pools for every contracted faculty position. I yield the rest of my time to Lori Tapahanso.
We have Lori Tapahanso next, and we're going to go ahead and reset the clock for her. Thank you. Yes, welcome.
Okay, thank you. And I'll continue. On number six, appropriate workload considerations in recognition of the addition... Ooh, this is not right. Sorry about that. Establish a new requirement to extend recruitment time if the candidate pool is not sufficiently diverse and provide annual report on candidate pools, interview recipients, and faculty hires. Number seven, provide access to interviews for part-time faculty seeking contracted positions who are members of protected classes under the AA plan. Establish and implement a diversity fellowship program, a faculty fellowship program, with the first year of fellowship awardees, a career pathway for faculty from underrepresented ethnic minority groups to move to full-time positions. Enhance professional development funding and appropriate workloads to facilitate professional development. Number nine, establish an internship mentorship program for potential faculty who have career technical experience, especially in trades, but no teaching experience. Explore partnerships to promote K-12 and college, community college teacher hires and CTE after internship at LCC. Number 10, remove barriers to moving to Lane County for newly recruited faculty of color. Number 11, ensure that all levels of management and upper administration positions include strong representation of ethnic minorities and members of the LGBTQI-plus community, including through required external postings of all positions, required internal postings of all interim positions, and interim positions limited to 12 months. Number 12, review and revise hiring policies and practices for systemic racism and disparate impact. Example, newly implemented criminal background check prior to hire. Implementation of hiring bias training and consideration of blind review processes. Number 13, discontinuation of favoritism and any-all practices that do not provide equitable opportunities, which includes all steps within hiring practices, starting with formation of search committees and creation of job postings. Please see the expanded definition of these items in the document in front of you. In terms of retention, number one, consider loan forgiveness as a tool for recruitment and retention. Number two, promote opportunities for professional development for employees from ethnic minority groups, including expanded funding for additional degrees and leadership development opportunities. Number three, appropriate workload consideration for any-all bilingual, multilingual faculty who use these skills in faculty work, including tribal languages and ASL teachers. I yield the rest of my time to Rosa.
Thank you. So we have Rosa Lopez up next, and we'll reset the clock for three minutes. Thank you.
Hi. I will continue on retention. Number four, provision of trained mentors with diverse racial, ethnic, and or linguistic backgrounds for new BIPOC faculty. Number five, funding for regular collaboration opportunities for faculty of color, LGBTQI, or other marginalized communities who are isolated in departments or disciplines with few, no other teachers of diverse backgrounds. Number six, appropriate workload considerations in recognition of the additional work BIPOC faculty do. Number seven, adoption of a restorative justice model in dealing with bias discrimination and related complaints, especially ones affecting BIPOC, LGBTQI, and other underrepresented populations. Number eight, provision of mediation upon request when cultural sensitivity bias and or microaggressions have led to concerns and or conflict affecting ethnic minority faculty. Please see expanded definition of this item in the document in front of you. Number nine, equitable provision of leave time to accommodate family care needs and bereavement. Ten, appropriate definition of family to be more inclusive of extended, non-traditional relationships. Eleven, expanded list of paid holidays to be more inclusive, including Juneteenth, Indigenous Peoples' Day, Yom Kippur, Hanukkah, Eid of the Year, Eid of Adah, and Kwanzaa. Assurance that faculty from diverse backgrounds within disciplines receive course assignments, recognition as faculty, salary schedule placements, placement equity, and compensation consistent with the faculty contract. Number 13, retirement incentives prior to, in order to abbreviate, obviate layoffs stemming from budgetary concerns. Recognizing that most, but not all, program cuts result not in layoffs but in contracted faculty transfers to other disciplines that they are qualified to teach, it is important to encourage faculty professional development and provide additional funded professional development for faculty seeking certifications in a discipline outside of their primary teaching area in lieu of a layoff. And 14, expansion of requirements and funding for cultural competence and professional development. I think that is all, and thank you for your time. And I did want to just reiterate, this was written by a much, much larger group. Of course, we are just the ones designated to read today. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So that is the last person that we have signed up to speak for public comment tonight. I'd like to thank everyone who took the time to address the board tonight and to also encourage people to send us your comments as well. It's always great to have things in writing. Mike?
Yeah, that was my comment question. It looked like there was a written document. I don't think I've seen it. And I would like to be able to see that.
Great. I'm sure that we can get a copy of that. So if they haven't already sent it. Thank you, Mike. All right, I am going to move us on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that board members would care to pull from the consent agenda at this time?
I approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So moved to approve the consent agenda by Mike Eister and seconded by Holly Johnson. Did anyone want to speak to their motion? No? Okay, so I am going to put that vote to Donna. Donna, you want to call the roll? We are voting to approve the consent agenda.
Holly Johnson?
Aye.
Angela Van Kraus?
Aye.
Mike Eister?
Aye.
Austin Fullnagy?
Aye.
Lisa Fragala?
Aye. That item passes. So let's go ahead and move on to action items. The first action item that we have on our agenda tonight is the proposed Board Policy: Possession of Firearms, which is based on SB 554. Michael Blade, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, thanks, Chair Fragala. So this is a draft Board Policy that was put together by OCCA outside of the, you know, giant library that we've been going through for the last year plus. This one came after the Senate bill was passed. And so it's, the one thing that I would, that I would point out to the board is the language in the second paragraph, which talks about on-duty law enforcement officers obviously are not subject to the firearms ban. There's a sentence, the last sentence in the second paragraph that says, "The president is authorized to make a temporary exception on the showing of good cause or necessity." And I would, I would ask the board that there's probably other exceptions you may want to think about. For example, on our campus, we do some law enforcement training where the law enforcement officers are not on duty during that training. They may have firearms involved in that. There's also hunter safety courses that we do on campus that may have a firearm brought more as a prop. I don't think anybody's shooting or anything like that, but they may have, they, I would imagine the instructor brings firearms to show the, as a, as a, as a prop more than anything. So I do think there may be some, some language that you may want to add, or, or maybe all that is necessary is to take out the words "atemporarily" and add, you know, an S to the word "exceptions", which allows the president to be authorized to make exceptions on the showing of good cause or necessity. So I would just point that out. And in fact, OCCA in their, in presenting this document, you know, had comments to this document that said, "Those types of things may want to be included." Just, it sort of depends on what is on the specific community colleges camp, or universities campus. And I think we do have things outside of on-duty law enforcement where a firearm, you may want to permit an exception rather than a temporary exception, more of a, you know, an ongoing exception.
Um. So is there any, are there any questions? Or comments? Angela?
Yeah, thank you. I have two questions. My first question is, so in reading the, the background, if the, if the College Board of Education about the policy is committed as a bill, the college must have a clearly visible sign at all normal points of entry to the college grounds that are subject to the policy indicating that it's the affirmative defense in, or a concealed carry does not apply. And I see the concealed carry reference in the, in the document. I mean, obviously, I'm not a lawyer, but sort of just reading this, I don't see that there's... It's not obvious to me from reading it that the language prevents or prohibits concealed carry permits and weapons. Is this like, does everybody else understand this? And I, I'm comfortable just being the one who doesn't get it, if it, if it means what I think I'm hearing it's supposed to mean, but it doesn't sound like that when I read it. Does that make sense?
Michael Blade, do you want to address that? I do see language concerning persons licensed to carry a concealed handgun. And so I believe it does apply to all those circumstances. Is that correct?
Right. So, so basically, what you have in Oregon is a, is an affirmative defense. If you have a, if you're carrying a handgun, usually to handgun, I guess you could conceal a handgun if you had the proper clothing. But usually, we're talking about handguns with concealed carry. So you've got an affirmative defense if you're somewhere where firearms are not allowed. And in this, in this Senate bill that was passed, allows, allows a, a public, public property, in this case, Lane Community College, to overcome that affirmative defense. So if you have a concealed carry permit, you're not allowed to rely on the affirmative defense of, "I have a concealed carry permit, so I can carry in a place that doesn't allow firearms." And that was really the one area of, of the law, previous law, that, that really hamstrung community colleges and universities from keeping firearms off their campus.
So this is very clearly, in a legal sense, saying that we can and are choosing to prohibit guns even that would be permitted by a concealed carry permit.
Correct.
Right, perfect. I'm super in favor of that. I love it. My second question, if I may, I see another hand up. I can put my hand back up and come back.
You can go ahead.
Go ahead, Angela.
Yeah, thank you. If we were to revise the president is authorized to make a temporary exception language, Michael, do you have recommended specific language for that? And sort of, what would the implications be of making it more broad?
I, it depends. So when I, when you say you have recommended language, I personally believe the easiest way to do it is to take out the word "atemporarily" and add an S to "exception." So that would read, "The president is authorized to make exceptions on the showing of good cause or necessity." And what that would be doing is the board would be granting the president the authority to make the exceptions, rather than having to list out what the exceptions would be. And the problem with listing it out is you may leave something out, right? And then we're going to have to come back to you all and say, "Oh, we, you know, we forgot this other exception where we might need to have a handgun on campus for some reason." But if you would rather have it listed out, you know, the language would say something along the lines of, "The president is authorized to allow exceptions for classes, which may include firearms, such as law enforcement training classes, hunter safety training classes." And then we'd have a laundry list of, of other ones. And I guess we could put in et cetera at the end of it, which would give the, the president some authority to extend beyond that list. But I think the cleanest and easiest way is to just take out "atemporarily" and add an S to "exceptions," allowing the president to authorize exceptions. You know, and you could say, you know, and the board can be very clear telling the president, "Look, we don't, you know, we only want exceptions that are, that are really, that, you know, that have meaning to the classes that are being taught at, at Lane."
I think maybe part of what I don't understand about this is, is the president just blanket authorized to make exceptions? Or would the president need to bring each one to the board for approval? I keep asking questions. Let me put my hand down.
Go ahead, Michael, answer that.
Yeah, I would say that you're, you're giving the president the authority to do it on his or her own authority. I, I don't, I mean, maybe you all want the president to come to each and every time. I think that would be tedious. You know, you're hiring a president, you're trusting the president, you're entrusting the president, the, the, you know, controlling the campus, you know, public safety, et cetera, et cetera. I think this is a situation where it might make sense to allow the president to, to authorize the exemption. If, if there were certain, you know, if there was one, I think that the president was iffy on that, you know, I would encourage the president to come to you all and say, "Hey, what about this one?" But, you know, the ones that I think they would be authorizing would be things like law enforcement training classes that happen on campus. We do have those. Hunter safety, we do have those, things like that.
I see Austin in the queue, followed by Mike.
I make a motion to adopt the proposed possession of firearms, weapons, and other destructive devices Board Policy with a edit of removing temporary and exemptions, as recommended by Mi, Michael Blade, and to revoke Board Policy LLC 410 possession of firearms.
Is there a second?
I'll be having a second.
Okay, so that's moved by Austin and seconded simultaneously by Angela and Mike. And Austin, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, please. First off, thank you for those who spoke in regards to this. And also thank you for faculty, staff, and community members who reached out to me about this topic. And this is personal for me. I have lost someone due to, to gun violence. And I know there's a lot of people that are watching this, have either personally or know someone who has been impacted by this. And, and growing up in Idaho, I was taught, I was around guns. My family had a gun. And we were taught to treat a gun like a tool that you, that you not only respect, but you handle safely, and it's not a toy. And, and I was blessed to receive the education around gun safety and so forth. And with that, I believe that as part of that upbringing, you don't bring a weapon to an educational institution. It's not a tool for an education institution's. Books, not bullets, are the tools of, of education and higher education. I understand there might be certain exemptions to that. I'm open to that concept. But for the safety of our students, our faculty, our staff, and to our greater community, I think that this is a very, very important. And, and I, yes, I look forward for further discussion on this.
Mike, and then I have myself in the queue.
So the recent tragic death on the movie set and, and this topic made me think that maybe if we pass this, Marge might want to think about some sort of internal policy that would apply to our theater arts. our theater arts area. And maybe there's already one in place. I just throw that on the table for consideration.
I wanted to also thank the people who took the time to speak tonight to the board. We also received a letter that was signed by close to 25 community members in support of us implementing this option as an institution of higher ed. And I am, I am strongly in support of it. I have personally, as a second grade teacher, had to do lockdown drills due to an active shooter in the vicinity of an elementary school. It's terrifying enough to do those lockdowns for practice. It's even more terrifying to do them for a real reason. And so I absolutely agree. There's really no reason that we, we need to have handguns, either visible or concealed present on campus. So I was very excited when SB 554 passed and I will be voting in support of adopting this policy tonight. Angela?
Thank you. And I hope my comments are clear that I'm fully in support of the policy. I have additional questions. I wonder if the, I keep coming back to the president or authorized to make exceptions on the showing of good cause or necessity. I think I saw Mike shaking his head when I was asking about whether that would require, you know, approval by the board in advance or something like this. And that does seem unnecessarily cumbersome. But I would like to know if there are guns coming onto campus for any reason. And so I would like it if we could add some sort of like reporting or something so that like we're not ever surprised by like there are a bunch of guns on campus. And obviously they would be with good reason. They would be well controlled, very safe. All of this goes without saying, but I think some sort of notification process would make me more comfortable.
Marge?
Yeah, thanks, Angela. I was going to say the same thing, maybe a phrase with immediate notification to the board. So that way absolutely transparent. And I'd even use the word immediate. So there's no question about how it's being used.
I'm open to adding that to my motion if, if it's okay.
Accept that as a second or?
So the language would be, could you state that again, Marge? The president is authorized to make exceptions on the showing of good cause or necessity with immediate
notification to the board.
Angela's faking her head yes. And I'm guessing that Donna-
And if we do, I move that we amend the policy.
Hey, I believe we, we had a motion and a second. And so Austin made a motion for his own motion and Mike seconded it. I think we're good. So we're going to need to vote on the motion to amend first. So that is debatable. Does anybody want to debate the motion to amend? Seeing no one, okay, just to be clear, we're voting on the motion to amend the policy language to add the notification. Donna, can you call the roll on that, please?
Okay, Holly Johnson?
Aye.
Angela Van Crouse?
Aye.
Mike Eister?
Aye.
Austin Fullnagy?
Aye.
Lisa Fragala?
Aye. So the motion to amend passes. So let's go ahead and return to our original motion to adopt this policy. Was there any other conversation regarding the motion to adopt? Angela?
I keep coming back to the same sentence, which we've just moved to amend. So I wonder if there's, suppose there's a situation where board members disagree that there is actually good cause for guns on campus. Obviously, individual board members are not the board. Is, is there an opportunity for like a a special meeting or conversation? Does that need to be ratified in policy? How would that work?
I see Michael Blade shaking his head. And I, I do think that we, when we're writing policy, we need to write it broadly enough that we don't have to cover every explicit situation as he, as he discussed earlier, I believe that as a board, we are always able to revisit and review and change our own policy. We are the board. We have the authority to do that. So I, I believe that if there was a concern, we could revisit this policy. Any other conversation? Mike?
Just, just one other comment. I mean, there might be any number of things that the board might say, we'd like to have a special meeting to discuss. And as you said, Lisa, we could do that.
We can always do that.
Any, any number of other things. I'm very comfortable leaving it as it is.
Okay. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands. So I am going to have Donna call the roll for the motion on the table, which is to adopt. Let me just go back and find the language. To adopt the proposed possession of firearms, weapons and other destructive devices board policy and revoke board policy 410.
Hey, Holly Johnson?
Aye.
Angela Van Crouse?
Aye.
Mike Eister?
Aye.
Austin Fullnagy?
Aye.
Lisa Fragala?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. And just, I have a follow up question, Marge. I am going to assume that we will also be taking the time to notify any of the organizations or groups that rent space from us in any of our facilities, that this is, this is a policy that we have. I know it'll be noted and posted at our entrances.
Yes, as part of this, there's a lot of communication and notification. And if you like, we could report back our progress on that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I, I will say I do know some city council members who are quite excited that they are, they will be included within this, this policy because cities and counties were left out of SB 554, unfortunately. So I'm going to move us on to our next action item, which is the OSBA Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee Representatives. So give me a moment. I am on two computers. And so I keep wanting to do one and not the other. So let's see. For some reason, okay, here we go. I got it. So the Oregon School Board Association, which we are a member of, is conducting elections for the OSBA Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee Representative. We have one vote as a board and we did already nominate Austin for a position on the Legislative Policy Committee Position 6, which is Lane County. And tonight we are, we are voting on that as a board and also on the nomination for, of Linda Hamilton for OSBA Board of Directors Position 6. She is the incumbent and I believe we voted for her last year. So is there a motion for this recommendation for our vote tonight? Angela?
Yeah, I move that we authorize Chair Lisa Fragala to submit a ballot to the Oregon School Board Association containing votes for Linda Hamilton for OSBA Board of Directors Position 6 and Austin Fullnagy for OSBA Legislative Policy Committee Position Number 6.
There a second?
Second.
So that motion is made by Angela, seconded by Mike. Angela, did you want to speak to your motion?
I think that our nominations rather speak for themselves. I'm excited to have this representation by Linda and Austin. I hope that you're successful and voted in. Thank you for volunteering to serve.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other comments by board members? Okay, seeing none. I, we have a motion on the table to submit our, and I will do that for the board, our vote to the Oregon School Board in support of Linda Hamilton for Board of Directors Position 6 and Austin Fullnagy for the Legislative Policy Committee Position 6. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Holly Johnson?
Aye.
Angela Van Crouse?
Aye.
Mike Eister?
Aye.
Austin Fullnagy? Lisa Fragala?
Aye. So that motion carries. Thank you. And I also also wish both Austin and Linda Hamilton best of luck. And our next action item concerns redistricting. And so I believe we will start with some information from Brett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. This next item is, is a follow up from the redistricting item on your packet from the work session earlier this month. As you recall, redistricting is a process that occurs every 10 years following the federal census. Every elected body from as big as a, a, a House District for the US Congress to as small as your neighborhood precinct has to be readjusted to ensure that the population count within its boundaries is as close to those as the other districts around it. And that is to ensure that the citizens that are voters in those districts have equal, equal protection under the law, equal representation. So that if you have one house district in Oregon, it doesn't say have 70,000 more voters than another one, that everyone is represented equally. And so this is something that everyone has to deal with from school districts to the state legislature to our counties, you know, municipal governments once every 10 years. Do we have to do it? Well, once we receive the, the population counts, when the census is taken each 10 years, we look at the zones, the basic, basic political boundaries that we have. And if the population counts within those zones exceed a variance of 5% when compared against the others. So in our case, we have five zones that must be within 5% of one another. And we found out following the most recent census that that's no longer the case. The, the population growth in West Lane County has exceeded the population growth in Springfield and the eastern part of the county. And therefore, in, in some of our zones, we have a population that is over 6% greater than what it would be if all of the zones had an equal population count. So what this means is unlike 10 years ago, when the board looked at the changes in the population and determined that because it was only about a 3% growth or a 3% difference in, in a couple of the zones and we didn't have to do anything. This time around, we actually do because the, the variations between the different zones is so great. We do have to take action to get the population counts back to where the zones are more equally represented. History, as we discussed earlier this month, prior to the 2011 census, when the, when Lane County updated its county commissioner zones, they have, as you may be aware, five county commissioner zones. And the LCC district shared similar boundaries with the LCC county commissioner zones. In 2011, Lane County updated the boundaries for those commissioner zones, but the LCC board chose not to at the time make any adjustments because it wasn't necessary. So this time it is. What, what, what do we look at when, when we make adjustments? The, the criteria is included in your packet and the Secretary of State sent it out to all bodies that are going through the redistricting process earlier this year. Basically, the zones have to be contiguous. You can't have, say, part of Zone 1 in Western Lane County and part of it in Eastern Lane County. The borders all have to touch. You need to utilize existing geographic or political boundaries. So that means everyone kind of relies on, on other political boundaries that are being set before it. So Lane County is looking to some of the changes that say maybe the state legislature is making with its maps. We look at what Lane County is doing. The city and counties, when they're adjusting their boundaries, they're going to look at things like the precinct boundaries and where precincts are being adjusted. So that say, maybe a city council ward doesn't split up a precinct in half, that a precinct is fully in one ward or another. And so everyone kind of looks at, at the, the redistricting that another body is doing and takes it into account in its work. We're asked not to divide communities of common interest to, to keep those connected by transportation lengths. And for, of course, for districts to be of equal population, which we need to do for five of our zones. The other two are at large. As you're aware, we do have a small portion of the college district in three other counties. We stretch into Benton, Lynn and Douglas County in certain parts. However, those areas are such small population counts that it really doesn't have a huge impact on the overall map of the district. When we're looking at a total population of close to 390,000. Small little, a couple hundred people here, a couple hundred there, only throws it off plus or minus less than 1%. So those don't have a huge impact. But as you're, you're probably aware, the LCC zones aren't a perfect match to the LCC, to the Lane County Commissioner zones. But in the past, we have attempted to follow the boundaries as closely as possible. And then oftentimes the, the LCC district may stretch over the county lines slightly. And finally, I think there's been some questions as to what would happen if any members are impacted by changes. And it's very similar to what would happen if, if legislators are impacted by changes. Or if, if any of you would happens to, to say move during your term. There's different rules depending on where you're at in, in your term of office, whether you would finish out your term, whether you would go until the next election in years past. You know, this is very common. It's something that does occur, especially when, you know, the law asks that you not, you not give consideration to the residents of elected officials when doing redistricting. So that's not something that, for example, that, that we would, we would consider when, when we do proposals. And so as far as deadlines coming up, Lane County has asked that if possible, we conclude our work by the end of this year. And that is so that when they start the process of updating all of the precinct information for Lane County, that they're able to update the LCC records at the same time that they update all of the other districts that they'll be updating from Congress to the state legislature to county commissioner and city, city districts. They're hoping that they can do our changes at the same time. Now, they know that puts us on a, on a tight timeline. And at the end of the day, is there anything in statute that requires you to be done with this work by the end of this year? No. The, the statute requires that, that we be done by the, the next election. And for LCC, that is 2023 and May of 2023. So you know, but, but, but that said, if, if the board chooses to, say, utilize the Lane County, updated Lane County map as items for how we would to work with LCAG, which Lane Council Government Staff are the GIS experts that help municipal governments in Lane County do their redistricting work. And so what they would do is, is work with the final map that's approved by Lane County. And I'll get to where they're at in the, the process in just a second. But what LCAG would do is take the final- But what LCAG would do is take the final approved map from Lane County. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we have some portions of the College District that aren't perfect with the, the Lane, with Lane County. And so those additions would be made. We'd look at the population counts, and then we would bring a proposed map to the board for your consideration. Currently, Lane County has, in the process of going through public hearings and receiving public comment on three maps that have been prepared by an independent citizen-led committee that has been working on redistricting since the summer. And they've prepared three maps for consideration. Those were released earlier this month and that they've had a first reading and public hearing on those three. And then on, I believe it's November 30th, they'll have a second reading and a second public hearing on those three maps. And shortly after, the county will make a decision on, on the map that they would like to go with. I believe that's probably enough background. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Because we're, we're already at time, and I'm going to extend this section of our agenda if without objection. So I do want to make it clear that we are not discussing adopting any maps or districts for the board tonight. That is not the intent of this conversation. The intent of this action item and this discussion is that we decide whether or not we are going to move the process forward by aligning ourselves with the county's commission's adopted maps, which they haven't adopted yet, but which they will be shortly, and, or, or not. If it's the or not, then we would need to figure that out. But we're not adopting any maps tonight. We're creating a plan for how we're going to adopt maps. And the adoption of those maps would happen potentially if we honor the timeline given to us by the Lane County elections at the December board meeting. So questions and comments? Angela, followed by Austin.
I think Austin had his hand up for asking.
I, Zoom is telling me that you do. I think he put it down and put it back up, but.
Okay. And I guess, like, I'm in favor of adopting whatever map Lane County adopts. I think it would be an unnecessary burden on LCC staff to try to redistrict ourselves. I think there's going to be a very, it sounds like robust process around the adoption of the, of the maps in the county for the commission, Commissioner District. So I'm comfortable with that. I'm just still not clear what's going on with these maps. I'm just sort of generally curious. Like, the color, the shading, is the shading the proposed new district where the, like, red line is similar? So for instance, if I look at Map J and I look at, like, D2, most, like, the existing D2 line is mostly purple, and then there's some additional purple outside it, and a little bit in D3 and a little bit in D5. So would the red line move to encompass all of the purple? And that would be D2? Is that how I should read these?
So, um, I, I, I'm not entirely sure how to read the maps. And I, what I have found to be the most useful is to pull up the suggested maps and the current map side by side next to each other and look at them. But per, it, perhaps we might be able to get some support for that out, outside of the board meeting for someone to explain, discuss that with you. Do you, do you need that information to make a decision?
It looks like Brett has an answer. If Brett has a short answer, I'd love to hear it.
The short answer is that the red lines are the current commissioner districts. The shaded colors are the adjustments.
So the county is choosing between one of these three that we have in our packet, and what they're choosing is the, the shading. And the red line will shift once they make a decision about which map to. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks for the, the quick and down and dirty answer, Brett. Austin?
All right. So I believe we need a motion. And I'm trying to just make sure I word this correctly based off of your explanation there. The, to adopt the redistrict maps for Lane County as part of the final maps for the Lane County redistricting process. That the motion? Cool. Excellent.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved by Austin, seconded by Angela. Austin, did you want to speak to your motion?
Uh, just that I look forward to hearing the results of the, uh, with LCAG and the independent committee is looking at. And I look forward to hearing the public comment to these maps as well. So thank you for, everyone who had, who has worked on this, has crunched the numbers, looked at the different dynamics of the communities that these maps are, that these maps are showing. Thank you.
Holly?
Will I be able to ask a question before we move?
Yep, we still have lots of time for conversation and discussion and questions.
So my question and my concern is with the timing of this action. I'm just a little concerned that our stakeholders don't have enough time to process this. And so I'm, my question is why we are waiting until November 17 to make this decision with it has to be made by the end of the year and why this wasn't, I think, discussed in more detail with us prior to November?
Brett?
Yeah, I, I am, I can appreciate kind of the, the frustration of the timeline for this process. It has been frustrating for all municipalities that have to go through the process. And, and a lot of it's been caused by the fact that most of the statutory deadlines that, that occur for redistricting have already passed. The, the courts have had to set a lot of the deadlines, and that's because of the pandemic and the fact that the results of the census were provided, I believe, nine or 10 months later than they normally are. And so all of this work, you, you can't start on the work until you get the population counts from the, from the census. And, and so the courts provided some dates, but they didn't provide all the dates. And a lot of the information and the guidance that is, is making its way down to, to us has, has only recently gotten to us. And we're, you know, as I, as I mentioned, a lot of the, the, the smaller districts weighed on those kind of political bodies above it to finish their redistricting work so that we can include those political boundary changes in our political boundary changes. That's one of the criteria we're asked to consider. And so we're, it, it's kind of that, that domino process. We have to wait for the domino to fall before us before we can start our work. And because those groups didn't, didn't get started on time, we're not getting started on time. Because there's not a, a statute for when community colleges have to, to be done. I mean, when I called the Elections Division about a month ago, they weren't even, we weren't even on their radar for, uh, uh, bodies that they had to provide guidance to. They were really focused on the legislative and congressional district changes.
Are any other questions or comments? So, so again, I, I, I just want to make clear that we are not adopting a map for LCC's districts tonight. We are simply saying that we will move forward in the process by looking at the county maps, aligning with the county maps as a guide, as a guide for us. And I think Brett explained earlier that we actually have some of our attendance zone is, as outside of Lane County, which would not be included in the county map. So we're, we're just selecting a process option for ourselves tonight. Seeing no other hands. I, oh, Mike?
So I, I was a little bit confused by what you just said. I realize we're not adopting a specific map, but are we, are we agreeing to adopt whatever map the county adopts?
We are agreeing to use those as, as guidance. Yeah, we're go, we're going to use those maps, but our map might look a, a little bit different because of our areas that are included outside of the county.
So we won't necessarily adopt the county's maps exactly, but will be guided by them?
Though I, I think the intent of the motion is to align ourselves and use the county's maps. But what I'm saying is that we are not adopting maps tonight. We will still have to have another meeting to officially adopt a map. And we, we won't be exactly the same because we do have some areas that are outside of Lane County in our, in our attendance area.
Thanks, Lisa. I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Austin? Okay, so, um, I'm gonna move the motion forward. We have a motion to, let me find it. Adopt the redistricting maps for Lane County as part of the final maps for Lane Community College. Holly?
I'm sorry. And so my final question is, are, can we wait on this? Or is this something that we need to do now?
Brett, did you want to respond to that?
It's this, uh, really what we're asking for is the guidance so that staff can proceed with doing the work necessary to bring you back the, the final map for consideration. So I mean, at that time, what, historically, what, what would happen would be the board would take the map, post it online, have a public hearing similar to when you approve a contract. You have a public hearing to get public comment on it. And so the public has an opportunity to speak at, it could be the December meeting, it could be a special meeting. It's up to the, you know, it's the board's prerogative on, on when you would like to do it. But then you would vote on, on that map as, you know, when you're ready to proceed.
Angela?
I'm thinking about this process as, like, saying whether we're gonna basically use the Lane County map or whether we're gonna ask staff to, like, do a ton of work right now, like, get going to build our own map. Is that an accurate way of thinking about it? Because if we're gonna build our own, we have just a boatload of work to do, and we need to start it immediately. Is that accurate?
Brett, did you want to address that?
Yes, I mean, we, we have mul, i- i- if, if we choose not to utilize the work that Lane County's done and use their maps as guidance for our map, you could choose to go another route and, and not follow Lane County's boundaries at that point. You know, we would have to set up a criteria and probably go down a route like Lane County has been doing for the past six months or so. So I think you would have to ask yourself, you know, the benefit to the voter for, for why you would choose different areas and, and set different criteria, and then we would have to lay that out and develop the process. But at this point, you know, really what, what you would be providing staff is just the guidance so that we can do the work. I mean, regardless of, of whether we follow Lane County's boundary changes or whether we go in a completely different direction, there's going to be work for staff that we need to do over the next month so that we can bring you a product for consideration.
And we, we are looking at a short timeline if we would like to meet the guideline, the deadline that has been established by the county. For, which I, I, I actually don't think it's only, January 31st is not only guidance from Lane County elections, but that it has also been set as guidance by the Secretary of State and by courts to ensure that redistricting is complete. Like Brett said, that has to do with the primary election in May 2022, but Lane County Elections is hoping that we will meet that deadline. So, again, we're not, we will have the opportunity to weigh in on any final map that is, is discussed. And I, I do agree with Brett. It would be really important that we have the opportunity to have a public hearing and have public input on whatever, whatever those maps look like. Any other comments or questions? So Donna, would you call the roll? We have a motion to adopt the redistricting map for Lane County as part of the final maps for Lane Community College.
Holly Johnson?
Aye.
Angela Van Kraus?
Aye.
Mike Eister?
Aye.
Austin Fullnagy?
Aye.
Lisa Fragala?
Aye. So that motion carries. Brett? I, I'm hoping that we can have, I know that we are waiting for the county to make a decision on this, but I'm really hoping that we can have information available to us at the next work session so that we could potentially have a public hearing that night as well as have another opportunity to have a discussion during the December board meeting.
We'll, we'll do our best to make that timeline. I think, as I mentioned, the county's next step is a second reading and public hearing on November 30th. So that's getting real close to the, the December work session. But I'll, I'll check with them on what they think their timeline looks like.
Hey, great. Thank you. All right, so let's go ahead and move on to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is regarding accreditation and some, really nice to have some, some good news to celebrate. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Strategy and Planning Officer, Richard Platt.
Evening, Chair Fragala, board members. It's a, I am happy to report that we had a very successful visit. October 25th through 27th, we participated in the virtual site visit with our accreditor, the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities. In three days, they visited with some 70-plus individuals, including board members, who we were very appreciative for, cabinet members, faculty, staff, students, in all areas of the college. One of the biggest takeaways that the site chair commented on is how engaged our college is in what we do and how hard everybody is working to ensure that we provide a high-quality and safe learning environment in very challenging times. We received six, six commendations. That is the most commendations I have ever received in doing this for 25 years. I was just thrilled. And I want to give a shout out to Student Affairs, Technology, Academic Affairs, Public Safety, all the divisions, Physical Plant, on doing a fantastic job in showing what good work we do here at Lane Community College for our students. They were impressed with how we extended services to make sure that students had what they needed to learn in a remote environment, the fact that we gave them computers to have access. We went above and beyond in financial means to help them be able to afford to go to college in difficult financial times. They couldn't find enough nice things to say. I won't read them verbatim, but boy, is it really good reading those six commendations. There were a couple of focus points that they pointed out to us. They do want us to enhance our model of effectiveness by making sure that what we communicate and how we make our decisions is inclusive of all stakeholders and constituents. They were pleased with how we did our work. They just want us to keep doing a good job and making sure that we're as transparent as we can possibly be. The second item is one that we knew we had some work to do on is with student learning outcomes. They were very pleased with our assessment model and They were very pleased with our assessment model and planning that we are moving forward with. They were pleased with the technology that we are implementing to help support the assessment of student learning outcomes. And they look forward to the, to hearing from us in the years to come about our progress. We will be meeting with them in Seattle, I believe, January 22nd. I will firm up that date later this week. But the Site Chair Committee will be at the meeting, myself, President Hamilton, and the NUCU Commission. At that point, we will hear the, the verdict of the accreditation for the college and then we will receive a subsequent letter. That are, those are the next steps. Right now, it's just hurry up and wait for about six to eight weeks until we have that final meeting with them. But I'm happy to entertain any questions that the board may have. And again, I want to congratulate the entire college on what an outstanding visit we had and how positive our site visit members found Lane Community College.
Thank you very much, Richard, and thank you. I know that this was a tremendous effort and that many, many people worked on this project and this report and seven years of lots of hard work. So thank you to everybody and, and to all of the, the staff and faculty here at the college that, that do the work every day and, and the managers and, and thank you, Dr. Hamilton and Richard for your leadership on it. Are there any comments or questions from board members regarding the accreditation report? Dr. Hamilton?
Now, I just want to mention, after spending a couple of hours with NUCU, our creditors today at a president's briefing, it became even more clear why we had such a good visit. They are shifting away from a straight-up outcome to trends, which made me so happy that Richard is with us because he's completely overhauled our data systems and, and how we do data. But we were, we were really able to show the trends in, in improvement. And, and so it's not so much exactly where you land, but are you trending always towards improvement? Which is really good guidance for the board, that that's what you're looking from us, that we're constantly chipping away and showing improvement in our trends. So it was, it was actually very informative to hear what they're looking for over the next few years from the colleges.
You? Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Richard. I'm gonna move us on to a discussion about international programs. And we've got Jennifer Falzerano, who's the Dean of Student Engagement and Provost Gerald to give us, uh, some information about this program at LCC.
Thanks Chair Fragala. So I'm gonna turn this over to Jennifer. She's the, the keeper of that shop and does a spectacular job. So, uh, I'll be, be here for questions if you happen to have any to direct to me, but you're in good hands with her. Jennifer?
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Paul, for your support of the international program. I will share my screen if that's okay. Right, can we see that okay?
You can.
Thank you for inviting me this evening to talk about the international program here at Lane Community College. We've had an international program actually since Lane opened in the 1960s. And we, um, have always welcomed international students here at Lane. In about 2010, we became very intentional at the direction of the board of having an international program where all staff would come together in one office and work together to support international students from the point of recruitment all the way through graduation and transfer on to universities. So completely self-funded program that receives no general fund support. So as I said, we're comprehensive and serving international students from beginning to end. We also offer affordable study abroad options and global degree completion opportunities for all students. That way, many of our students who might not have had the opportunity to have a global experience can come to a community college and get one. Our recruitment strategy to bring students to Lane spans multiple markets all over the world. We have 142 agency partnerships in 38 countries with, and 900 education USA offices and high school leaders that receive regular outreach from our office. When COVID hit, it was quite a challenge because most of our work is based off relationships and in-person. But our Associate Director for Recruitment, Carla Anderson pivoted to remote and since then has done over 120 virtual fairs, reaching over 10,000 prospective students around the world and kept that excitement and enthusiasm about Lane going across the globe. Our demographics are really exciting because we bring a truly global experience into the classroom. Often, when you're looking at international programs, you'll see one country 50%, 60%, 75%. But we've done intentionally to avoid that. So this fall, if you were saying, oh, where are our students from? Fatima, who was with us earlier tonight, she's from Morocco, but we have students from Japan, Vietnam, China, Ivory Coast, Kazakhstan, Togo, Malaysia, all across the globe. And this brings just a variety of perspectives into the classroom, which is so exciting. So pre-COVID, on a given term, we usually have about 350 of those students from over 50 countries. This fall, we have a bit over 200 from 44 countries and a lot of applications for winter and spring terms as those embassies reopen. We use peer mentoring and leadership development very extensively, holistic student supports to ensure that students really can adjust to life in the US, get to know other students and learn about our community. We focus on complexion, progression and completion in our academic transfer programs so that we're bringing a Lane degree in before those transfers. We've had students transfer to U of O, OSU, PSU, Pacific University and to some very top-ranked universities such as UC Berkeley, Purdue, Caltech, UCLA. And as you can see here in the data provided to us from our partners in institutional research and planning, we have seen degree completion really increase with our international students over the last 10 years as we've become more intentional about this. And a 3.02 GPA as students continue on from Lane. And many of those students begin in our ESL program and then go on to the credit program. One thing that's really exciting about our leadership opportunities is that they really are engaged in the Lane community. We have had the opportunity for international students to get involved with the NAACP, the Asian Association, Food for Lane County, Community Gardens, and really donated hours, more than 5,000, to the Eugene Springfield community. If you'd like to cheer on our Titan soccer team, our basketball team, our amazing volleyball team, there are 18 international Titan athletes this term and three of the ASLCC senators are international students. But in addition to that, as I mentioned earlier, we have some really exciting global degree completion programs. We have Lane alumni who this fall started their theater program and their dance program bachelor's degree at the University of Wales in Trinity St. David, which is way, way out in Western Wales in a tiny town that feels like you're in a BBC commercial. It's just fantastic. And the students are super excited that they can complete their degree and use their FAFSA as something they never imagined would be possible for them. We have a vibrant partnership with Ren School of Business, sending students there every fall to complete their business degree in one year after their Lane degree. Otago Polytechnic in New Zealand hopes to reopen next year to our students so that our AAS students can finish a bachelor's degree and new partnerships in the United Kingdom with York St. John and University of Ulster. We also have a study abroad opportunities that we hope to relaunch after COVID with a summer program in France and a multimedia exchange program with a partner in France. And you met Jerry Minahan earlier from our Cooperative Education Program. We work closely with them on the IE3 Global Internships, giving students the opportunity to work abroad. And we're working with our Spanish faculty to add more programs for our students who are learning Spanish here at Lane. So what happens now that we're getting to a post-COVID environment? Well, some really good news there. Um, this fall, our first time to campus enrollments were similar to fall of 2018. So that tells us we're coming back to normal. We are seeing more and more students be able to receive vaccine around the globe and travel to the US as embassies are reopening. We have an incredibly diverse recruitment network and excellent word of mouth. Our goal is for every one of our students who comes to Lane to have such a wonderful experience here in Eugene and Lane County that they want to bring their cousins and younger siblings. As I said earlier, we're seeing good application numbers coming in for our next winter, spring and, and next fall's intakes. So a few challenges out there that the team is working to, you know, always be aware of to ensure adequate and well-trained staff is really important because takes a, it takes a little while to learn to work effectively, especially around the immigration roles. We have a lot of students really wanting to get back on campus for classes, so we're really looking forward to that in winter term. And the rising cost of housing in Eugene is also something. Our Titan Court is so important for international students. They build such a strong community there using the community centers to get to know other students and, and do tutoring and housing. So it's really important that we have that available for students, especially as we've all seen kind of the rising costs here in Eugene. Um, and we'd like to take a moment to invite all of the board members to come to International Night tomorrow night. If you've ever had the opportunity to see a World Vision or Eurovision, or if you love American Idol, our international students will be doing that tomorrow night. So please come and join us 6:00 PM and you can vote for your favorite musical group at the end. And so I say thank you for your time and our students have presented a small video.
You maybe need to turn it up?
Let me try that again.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. So I see we have some hands up here from board members. Mike, followed by Austin?
Thank you, Jennifer. One of my first jobs was as a head resident of an international house, so I envy the work that you're doing. I'm wondering if you have a sense of when we might get closer to pre-COVID numbers? Does it look like things are moving in that direction or is it hard to tell?
Things are looking positive. Uh, this fall, as I said, we had the same number of new international students that we had in fall of 2018. And all of the embassies were not yet open in August and September. We were trying to help those students get here. So, um, we see the same kind of applications looking towards next fall that we were seeing prior to the pandemic. So my hope is we have good, strong intakes this year and next fall. That following year will be back up to our pre-COVID numbers.
Austin?
First off, again, thank you. Thank you for all the work that you and your staff do. You know, but I've heard many times that Lane Community College is a gem within our community and I feel like this is a gem within the gem. So it's really amazing the work that y'all do. And I just also want to emphasize to the board, like, uh, so uh, here locally, we have a huge need for healthcare workers. And in the world, uh, based on the reports I've read at the, um, on an international level, there is a huge need for nurses, healthcare workers, direct care and indirect care workers in the healthcare industry. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for our institution to help meet those needs, especially with our healthcare degrees and programs. And I would also want to encourage the board to consider like other ways that we can, or other degree programs that we can use to tailor towards international students as well. So anyway, I, I think this, uh, we should have a broader conversation about this program and about, um, not only serving the local community, but the global community. So thank you so much for this presentation. I really wanted to, uh, I, I really look forward to this presentation to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Austin, anyone else? Um, Paul?
Thank you, Chair Fragala. Yeah, if I could just comment for a second, you know, Jennifer has been in her current role for about a year, but prior to that, she served as the Director of the International Program. And I, I just really have to commend her on the work that she and her team, well, one, building a good team, but the work that they have done to really grow this program, not only for, you know, the international students, but to also to create that sense of international community for our resident students. So I, I really commend her for that work and I'm very thankful for the work that she's done there.
All right, I'm not seeing any other hands, so I am going to move us on to our next discussion item. So we're gonna take a look at the COVID compliance update. And we've got Richard Plot and Provost Gerald to discuss that with us. I'm not sure who is gonna go first.
Did we have a plan, Richard? I can't remember if we discussed who was gonna go first.
I'm gonna defer to you.
Okay, great. I'll jump in and then, uh, if you want to fill in around the gaps, that would be great. If there's anything specific about, uh, things out of my area and, and maybe in IT or HR, we might have to get others to help. But I, I just wanted to comment a little bit on the, the student side from the COVID compliance. I submitted numbers that were current as of, uh, last Wednesday, I believe it was. Or, um, yeah, I think last Wednesday. Uh, but I wanted to provide a little bit of an update, uh, there just to kind of get a sense. So, so this fall, as you can tell, um, we, we have been on the student side, on the employee side too, but I'll focus on the students, um, managing to, to maintain a level of vaccination among our in-person students and, well, actually the students at large of about 93% or so. Uh, we do have currently about 2,500 students this fall that have some in-person component to their instruction. Um, and that's a significant number. That's about 37% of the total students we have. So a little less than 40% of our students, uh, this fall actually have some in-person component. It could be as, as, as small as coming in for exams or a lab workshop or something like that, but some in-person component. We are still chasing, if you will, about 650 students that have some in-person component but have yet to, uh, supply documentation. Some of that has been to technical, due to technical difficulties. Uh, we still have a few hundred tied up in review. Um, so we're still trying to, to winnow down that number. Moving into winter term, uh, we currently have about 2,500 students registered for winter term. Of them, 1,500 have some in-person components. So that's 60% of our students have some in-person component in the winter. Um, and that was intentful on our part. We really were trying to, seeing the level of engagement that's needed, in-person engagement needed with our students, we really wanted to try to add some more. So we are, are tracking again to have, uh, 50% to 60% of our students have some in-person engagement. That was our goal. Uh, if the enrollment, uh, trajectory stays, we'll probably end up somewhere around 6,000 students for winter term. Uh, we are seeing a drop in enrollment. But, uh, that would give us somewhere in the neighborhood of about 3,500 students, again, that have some in-person component on campus for winter. And that could, again, be as simple as, as of an exam, having to come in for exam or something like that. And again, with all of that, we are looking at still being, uh, on the student side, about 93% vaccinated of our in-person and the students at large. So that's really good and I feel really good about that. And the employee numbers are, are, are about the same. We don't have hardly any students, uh, employees rather, that, that haven't submitted documentation yet, but, uh, the, the vaccination rate among employees again is, is over 90%. So I feel really good about the vaccination status of our campus community and being able to and being able to operate in a very safe and responsible manner in the winter.
Thank you. Um, Richard, did you want to add anything?
I'm just going to add that we uh, the the posting of the information that Paul has shared is taking place on our website. It is ADA compliant. We are now working on adding visualizations from some of the software tools that we have. And so we keep the public informed and we are transparent about the process. So we are appreciative of support and the work we've received from the teams and uh, we are very excited that uh, we have a high participation rate thus far with the vaccine adaptation survey.
And we have, uh, I forgot to mention testing uh for for unvaccinated individuals that that do have uh some, both employees and students that do have uh, uh, in-person um, uh, activities or work. Uh, we have begun uh surveillance testing of those uh individuals that do have exemptions. Uh, the employee testing actually started this week. The student testing starts next week.
Hey, I see Mike's hand is up.
Yeah, so not only at L C C, but uh, across the board with community colleges. I've been, I've been surprised that the uh, federal assistance that has been provided hasn't seemed to cause an increase in enrollments or a greater increase in enrollments. Have you got any speculation about that, Paul?
No, you know, it's really hard to figure out, Mike. I I've been, I I've been uh, uh, scratching my head over this one a lot. You know, typically we we don't see patterns like this. Um, you know, I think a lot of it is, um, uh, I think there has been a drop in engagement and I think students are seeing that drop in engagement. Um, I think that, you know, we're working on getting the word out that we're providing a lot more engagement and I hope to see a rebound because of that. Um, you know, we're a little unique having a the vaccination requirement. Uh, I do feel that costs us some enrollments. It hurts us, I think, in 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 certain areas, in particular in the career technical education area, apprenticeship and whatever. And we're working to try to mitigate that, but um, I I I I can't figure it out. I think it's just people are are tired. They're retreating from a lot of things that they normally did. And I think what we're, it's going to take is a whole kind of behavior mindset shift, right, that gets people back and engaged again in in being able to understand that we we can live and operate and go to school and learn in in this environment.
Thanks.
Aaron?
I wanted to comment also on about the folks under forty are the largest percent of those considering changing their job. And they are heavy in thought to that right now. There's many reports, one of the most recent in Washington Post. And uh, that particular crowd is one of our largest categories from about eighteen to thirty-five. That's a major portion of our enrollment. And they are the ones who are taking a deep breath, sitting back and saying, is this what I want to do or do I want to change my career? And as that thought process continues, uh, employers are are looking at what they were going to call the great resignation to the great reassessment. And is this the career I want? And if so, how do I move forward? So I think we're poised to grow again as we move forward out of this pandemic environment. And our audience who we serve mostly has that time to consider, well, I think I want to change a career and be this. And then we'll be ready to help serve them.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Well, Jim, just one follow-up to Richard's. I I did meet a career technology student yesterday who discontinued his um business uh program at U of O to uh take up construction technology. So uh, that's that's a a good example of what you're just talking about, Richard.
Thank you.
Um, I I am curious about, I know very, um, early on when we first began to have conversations about um, the vaccination requirement. Um, part of our conversation involved uh, being a fully vaccinated campus. And I I'm, I'm not aware if um that status is still something that it exists, or if that's still a guideline from the CDC. Do, would we be meeting that qualification and does that guidance still exist?
Yeah, the guidance does still exist. Uh, we we squarely meet that definition and and will. I mean, I would say we do loosely now, but for sure in winter, uh, we will because we will have because of our timing of implementation, fall, we had a mixed population. Um, in in winter, anybody that is on campus will need to be um, uh, will have uh, submitted documentation and will will either have been vaccinated or or been uh, or have an approved exemption. And I am surprised at the the level of vaccination. It's it's a bit higher than I was anticipating. We do meet that definition. I would say we would would certainly uh, have no problem considering ourselves a fully vaccinated campus uh, uh, as in winter. Um, and um, there is still the guidance, the CDC guidance that is uh, has special cut out carve-outs for fully vaccinated campuses with restrictions and and regulations that are different um for that. Um, yeah, for sure.
Great, that that's good news. I I felt like that was one of our goals when we considered the vaccination requirement.
Yeah, I feel really good about that, actually.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, so um, I'm going to move us on to our reports. And first, we have um, a report from Jeremiah Vandergrift from our student government.
Hello.
Hi, Jeremiah.
Good evening, um, members of the Board of Education, President Hamilton and members of the gallery. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Jeremiah Vandergrift and my pronouns are he, him and his. And I am the president of the student government here at Lane. Uh, I've just got a few things for you today. Recently, we established drop-in office hours for our uh current student government senators. And we posted them on Titan Communities. Additionally, we um, we have a number of students that are interested in becoming um student government senators, and they've met the requirements to do so, to be ratified. So we can expect to see a few new members uh on our student student government soon, uh, which will be great. Um, and last but not least, uh, the Student Activity Feed Committee is actually kicking off next week and I will be chairing that. Um, thank you for your time. That concludes my report.
Very much. Um, up next, we have Frankie Coquenor from L C C E F.
Hello, board members. Um, I apologize for not having my camera on. My internet slows down too much with it on. My name is Frankie Coquenor. I'm the president of L C C E F and my pronouns are she and her. On behalf of the Classified Union, I would like to thank the cabinet for agreeing to our contract proposal. And I would like to report to the Classified Union members, or I would like to report that our Classified Union members ratified the M O A that you ratified last month. Although the pay increase that comes with this M O A is still below the inflation rate, it is still a good raise and I'm personally excited about it. We hope that L C C E F can continue to work with the board and the administration to get the L C C classified employee salaries caught up with our public employee counterparts across the state of Oregon. We do have one concern, and that is whether it might be possible to include the pay increase on our December paychecks. Many of our classified employees have experienced huge financial impact during the pandemic as prices have risen and family members have lost work, et cetera. With the holidays coming up, many have approached the E C members to ask whether they will see a raise during the season. We realize it's a short timeline and this was brought about by the time required to hold a membership vote on our end. But we are hopeful that some of this, some of the portion of the increase will be made available now. And again, thank you for approving the M O A. L C C Executive Council members would like to thank you for passing the policy for firearms, weapons and other destructive devices. The L C C campus should be a peaceful place of learning and we hope that we never have to experience the violent offense that Thurston High School and Unqua Community College have experienced. Finally, I would like to ask that the college will look towards moving more of our timesheet employees to at least half-time benefit positions. Our part-time employees are the lowest-paid employees and many of them depend on subsidized housing and SNAP benefits. These employees are struggling and are one paycheck away from homelessness. They love Lane Community College and they love their jobs. Prior to the layoff of all of our part-time employees at the beginning of the pandemic, some of them had worked for Lane for more than a decade. It is time that we start working together to ensure that all these employees have job security and are compensated in a manner that treats them with dignity and respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frankie. Um, up next, we have Adrian Mitchell from L C C E A.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. I will address a few topics tonight. Local updates, labor relations, enrollment and state funding, and a personal note. So first, I'd like to express appreciation for the Committee on Racial Equity and Social Justice and creating concrete strategies and recommendations for the recruitment and retention of BIPOC faculty. Also, we greatly appreciate the leadership in H R for their focus on recruitment and implementing strategies to promote bias-free searches. Thank you, board members, for your ongoing commitment to lead and direct the college to become a truly inclusive and just campus. Your leadership and voices are essential and we look forward to ongoing collaboration. A few updates on labor relations. I'm happy to report that we have resolved a grievance regarding contracted faculty positions to ensure that additional faculty will be hired to meet student demand in accordance with the contract. Also, L C C E A continues to attempt to negotiate over the impacts of Senate Bill five fifty-one, which we anticipate will bring five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars per year in additional funding to L C C. The process, however, has not been productive. There was a two-month delay when the administration did not respond to requests to negotiate. Administrators reversed positions from one meeting to the next and have again indicated an unwillingness to make commitments at this time. L C C E A has created proposals aligned precisely to the specific requests made by the college, but the college has yet to make a single proposal. Without an agreement to maximize access to the funds, little funding will be available to L C C. Given the time sensitivity and possible loss of state funding, L C C E A requested mediation, but the administration declined. Faculty remain flummoxed by the lack of collaboration on the part of the administration, which is alarming given the tremendous amount of funding that will be lost without an agreement soon. Uh, regarding enrollment and state funding, as I'm sure you're all aware, uh, we have some and issues with enrollment. And our enrollment has decreased about twenty percent, slightly less than twenty percent from fall two thousand nineteen to fall twenty twenty-one, according to data provided by institutional research. On a positive note, because uh, of a number of factors, one being the fact that our our college has done better than some other community colleges and colleges in terms of our um enrollment decline. It has not declined as much as others. Our share has increased in terms of the overall uh Community College State Support Fund. In addition, because the C C S F, the overall state support fund is a fixed amount, when F T E is down statewide as it is now, the reimbursement per F T E increases. So while we have seen enrollment decrease about twenty percent, slightly less than twenty percent over the past two years, the increase to our reimbursement per F T E is twenty-four percent. So that is a mitigating factor, which uh, we we need to focus on some positives, I think. Um, on a personal note, I wanted to share that I was a student teacher in a Eugene high school when the Thurston High School shooting took place in nineteen ninety-eight. The stories that were shared during public comment time resonate with my own experience and that of the students I was working with that day in terms of the terror that affected students and teachers alike. I'm expressing my own appreciation for the board's leadership on passing the new policy tonight. Thank you for your time.
You, Adrian. Hey, so um, let's move on to information reports. Are there any questions regarding the reports you have in your packet? Angela?
Thank you. Um, I was asking some questions about the um sort of view of our finances from the um, six E versus seven A um perspective. Um, and I think that Zach answered that pretty well in email, but I was hoping if Zach or Greg are on this call, they could sort of give us an overview um of the group.
Zach here? Go ahead, sorry to interrupt.
Here, yes, and and Greg is, I believe, as well. So would you want me to go into more of the material I've provided or just context for your question?
Um, really just the context of the question and then um, I may have follow-up questions, but if
Okay. And there's Greg. So the budget projection, from what I do is I combine our operating funds, so funds one and nine together. And I only really look at the actual expenses and I forecast those out to the rest of the fiscal year based on the assumptions that we made at this time. And as more information becomes known, those assumptions change. And the report that Greg provided was more of a kind of a look at our budget versus actuals compared to quarter one of last year for to quarter one of this year. And while that kind of shows a period of time that we were doing, it's important to note that through quarter one, which ended on September thirtieth, we only really had a little bit of fall term um expenses. So as we move through October and November, those expenses will start to go up as we're ramping or moving through the term. So I take that information and the report that I do and I go forward looking with it. Greg, do you want to add anything on the financial summary that you provided?
Yeah, so my uh, my agenda item and and like Frankie, I have to keep my uh, video off for uh internet quality, but um seven A, really, you know, and and I know you guys are number, renumbering your board policies and and looking at L C C A, but this one really refers to board policy uh two fifty-five. And mainly, it's a, it's an accountability report showing that the college has not expended more funds that have been received in the fiscal year to date, except it's been approved by the board. And so we do uh, once a quarter, we do an accountability report. In the first, and this is how money flows into the college, right? So in in the first quarter, we have most of our fall registration is done. When Zach was saying, uh, most of our expenses are in quarter two, right? So when you look at it, we received the bulk of our fall revenue. And if you look at my report, you're about forty percent um, received of um tuition. So if you were to look at that accountability report alone without any other information, it would look positive. And I think that was what your point was. Um, you know, we're showing thirty-three million in in resources, which includes the fund balance to about, to the um twenty million in expenditures that have been spent to date. In quarter two, of course, we'll see that increase as fall term um kicks off, October, November, December. So did I answer that? I I know I worked with Zach on the response. Is that kind of covering that?
Paul? Yeah, that's helpful. I so what I, what I'm taking away from the reports um in six the number, the budget projection is that despite the additional funding coming in from the various um cares and hearths and and so on, we're still um, we're overfunding or under-resourcing. Um, our surplus deficit is is not looking good at this point for the end of our fiscal year. And so I just wanted to be really clear that that, that's what I'm seeing and it seems like maybe we need to be talking about from some budget level.
And that is correct, yes. Um, I'm assuming twelve percent credit decline for the year um, based on what we've seen and and what we saw in fall and summer terms. So if there's improvement in winter and spring, that will shift in the right direction. And in the executive summary where we talked about the the HIRF dollars, what you're seeing in the projection is assumption of three million of that remaining amount. Um, as Paul mentioned about testing starting and once we get a COVID testing starting and once we get a better kind of pulse of what that, those weeklys costs will be, at that time, I'd feel more comfortable moving some of those residencies. at that time, I'd feel more comfortable of moving some of those residual dollars to offset the experience of lost revenue that we've had.
Other questions? Angela? Okay, all right. So anybody else have any other questions about any reports? Thank you very much for that response and for that question. Always learn something. So I'm going to go to our closing items. Are there any reports from board members? Including, is there an OCC A board report?
Yeah, just in regards to OCC A, I would definitely emphasize in the documents provided in the report, the strategic plan, also an introduction to our new executive director. And yeah, there's there's some good materials in there about the Build Back Better Plan, what what was in there, what's not in there. And yeah, there's there's really good information in there that I just want to point out. And yeah, yeah, no, this is a exciting, interesting and robust time for community colleges throughout the state and the nation.
Thank you. Anyone else have a board report? Okay, I'm going to move us on. Any ad hoc committee reports? Okay, I'm I'm going to talk about future meeting dates and agenda items. Our next meeting is December first. We have a work session followed by December fifteenth regular meeting. And then just a reminder that we are going to flip the board meetings and work sessions starting in two thousand twenty two. But our January, our January regular meeting will be the twelfth, and our board retreat will be January twenty second. I also wanted to give you an update on the strategic plan. That plan has been going to call it a variety of college councils for feedback. And so we are waiting for that feed feedback to come to us. And it should, we should be taking a look at that in December again. Some of the the work that is going to need to be done to bring that back to the board does involve just some minor editing. And I'd like to suggest that we have an ad hoc committee do some of that minor wordsmithing before bringing it back to the the full board. So we don't spend our time in the board meeting discussing, you know, this verb or that verb. And we're we're suggesting that it be the chair, the board chair, working with the consultant to just do some editing that would not change the meaning of the draft document that we have coming from the advisory committee. And then also in terms of the selection of the the next president, that work is moving forward. Our consultant Jill is actively recruiting. It sounds like it's going pretty well, and we hope to have future updates for the board on how that's going. And I know everybody has received a save the date for some first round of interviews that we'll be conducting. Mike, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, another board that I have another public board that I chair has been meeting in person for the last at least two months with the board members all in the boardroom, but the staff and public appearing virtually. And that seems to be working well. I wonder if we are thinking about a time when we might think about hybrid or where we could actually be in the same room together.
We have been discussing that a lot. And actually, Marge has tasked Donna with a special assignment to investigate a variety of options. Also, with the long term goal that ultimately, as a board, we will be able to continue having high flex meetings for accessibility for the public and the community. And so we are talking about that. You know, we were waiting to, I think we had made a decision that, you know, we would revisit and see where we were at in January. And we're we're waiting to see where these next couple of weeks take us and do some evaluation. I would be curious to know, is is that board meeting with masks on?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And so our board does have some challenges regarding meeting with masks on. And so based on some needs of certain certain members. And so we're 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 working to kind of try and figure out how to approach that.
Nice.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I really look forward to when we get to meet again. And maybe, maybe I will get to chair at least one meeting in person as your board chair. So all right, so I I don't see anything else for closing items. Does anybody have anything for the good of the order?
So we have an exec session.
We do, I was just going to say. So after we adjourn board members, we will be convening in an executive session. And please look for a different link in your email to join that meeting. So I will convene the November seventeenth Board of Education meeting of Lane Community College. Thank you, everybody, and good night.